Okay. Hello there. Can you, hold on, can you hear me?
I can hear you, hello.
All right, hello there, Dr. Cosgrove, can you hear me?
Yes, again, good morning.
Okay. Well, I want to thank both of y'all for coming on. Again, there may be a few more people that jump on, but I, I value the time of the people who get here on time. So we'll get started.
Okay.
I'll do a quick introduction, I'll let Dr. Cosgrove introduce herself. Then I'll kind of, what I'll ask, I'll let her introduce myself, I'll tell you a little bit more about me and then I'll let you take it and introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about you and why you're running, okay?
Okay, sure.
Okay, so, Sondra Cosgrove, I'm a history professor over at the College of Southern Nevada.
Awesome.
And I just try and do as much civic engagement as I possibly can, and I definitely like working with folks that want to have good, honest dialogue, not screaming at each other or kind of doing talking points. And Brian always has a very lively discussion with candidates, so I'm always happy to jump on.
Yeah.
Well, awesome, well, thank you, Dr. Cosgrove. Patty Charlton is a very dear friend of mine, you know Patty? Yep, so.
Yep.
That's great, oh, good.
Okay, well, great, now, how do you, what will you want me to call you, Ms. Nash, Trish, or what?
Trish.
I just want to make sure, okay, first of all, I thank you for taking the time, just to let you know a little bit, I created this group called The Independent Black Voters on Facebook, probably about four or five years ago, I can't remember anymore. We have over twenty-five-hundred people growing, it's not just for black folks, it's for anybody who wants to stop, talk about the issues that are prevalent in our community, because basically if they're prevalent in our community, they're prevalent in all communities, we just can't tend to get hit first. This is, just as every election, I told people to stop talking about this is the most important election, every election is important. And more importantly, it is important that the candidates start to realize that it is important you talk to everybody, it is important that you listen to them. Far too many people do, they get their talking points, they stay on script, and they literally tell you nothing in an interview. You will not have that happen today, if you're not uncomfortable at one period of time, then I'm not doing my job. So, again, Trish, you are running in Henderson, correct?
I am, yes, sir, I am.
Just so you know, I live in Henderson, so I have a vested interest in this race. In the previous years, we focused on the judicial system, and we're proud to say that probably eighty-five percent of the candidates that we endorsed won. We expanded it this year, we've also created a lot more platforms and tools that actually help even more the candidates that are endorsed when, because we are not nonpartisan in the primaries, there are times that we endorse both a Republican and a Democrat in the same race. Why? Because we want the best against the best, we don't want the worst against the best, we don't want the worst against the worst, we want the best against the best. That forces people to talk about the issues that many of the people who identify as nonpartisan want you to talk about, not just to reach the far right or reach the far left or take the talking points of your specific party, because that is not what we want to hear. I wanted to let you know that, because we are different, in the fact that some people, let them say, why did you endorse this person? Yeah, I did, but he's the best of the one side over here, or she's the best of that side versus this other side, there may be another person who's the best, and I want them to go up against each other, and that's the whole thing on what we try to do, we're different in that aspect. So, I'm gonna ask you to tell me a little bit about yourself, tell me a little bit about your history and tell me a little bit about why you are running for the city council for Henderson.
Okay, awesome, well, thank you, first of all, thanks for taking the time and for being able to move the time to eleven-thirty, I appreciate that. So, I moved to Las Vegas, to Henderson, twenty-two years ago, in two thousand, and I'm originally from the Chicago area. But I moved here from Louisville, Kentucky, I was working for a fastener company, screws and bolts. And that's what I did, I sold screws and bolts, and then moved here, worked for a company called Steelcase, they manufacture office furniture. In fact, CSN was one of our clients, as well as the entire Clark County School District. At the time, CCSD was the largest school district in the nation. And, as I said, they make office furniture, and then nine-eleven happened, and that just changed the industry totally. Manufacturing just went downhill, they ended up closing plants and ended up getting laid off, so I got into real estate and here I am. And, but been in real estate now for twenty years, my husband and I own a real estate company. Our office is located in Cadence, and it's in the Home Finding Center of Cadence. We actually bought the building during COVID, it was an opportunity with SBA loan, so we did that. My husband handles commercial real estate, I handle the residential side of real estate. But, more importantly, is my involvement, my deep roots in the community. When I moved here, I decided that I really wanted to be involved, as I have been anywhere, wherever I live. And so I decided I was going to get to know Henderson, and I started, I joined the Henderson Chamber of Commerce. Went to any event that I could that the city had, whether it was a ribbon cutting for a new park that had just opened. I went to these events, and as a result of that, I got to know some city council people, I got to know the mayor, they would see me all the time, and then eventually, city council person said, you know what, Trish? We would like to have you be on a committee, so then I got involved in some various committees with the city. I then became a member of the Board of the Henderson Chamber, eventually on the Executive Board, and then eventually, last year, I was the Chair of the Board for the Henderson Chamber of Commerce. I am involved in a couple nonprofits, one which is near and dear to my heart, which is Living Grace Homes. I'm the Chair of the, well, actually, I just resigned from that because of the election, because of the campaign, but I'm still on the Board for Living Grace Homes, have you heard of Living Grace Homes? Yeah, oh, you're on mute, okay, anyway.
Yeah, I know a little bit, but not a whole lot.
Okay, so, Living Grace Homes was founded about fifteen, sixteen years ago by a lady by the name of Kathleen Miller, she is here in Henderson, they have two residential homes in Henderson. And what they do is, what we do is, we help young ladies that are between the ages of fourteen and twenty-four that are pregnant and homeless, and we help them from the point of having the baby, teaching parenting skills, learning just life skills, helping them get a job, helping them, once they have a job, find a place to, to live, so there's a lot involved in that. Bank, a checkbook, you know, just different things like that that they need and they didn't have, and they usually come from just very challenged family life, and so, but we've had some amazing success stories of of women that have just gone on to do some really wonderful things, so, so that's very near and dear to my heart. So, I was told that there was an open seat for a city council, my husband said, why don't you run, and I said, I think you're crazy, I don't want to be involved in politics. But I gave it more thought, and I thought, you know what? I am deep rooted in the community, and I love the community, and I want to help, and I have to look at it not as politics, but as public service, and how, how I can make a difference in the community. So I gave it some thought, and I thought, you know what, I think that I could make a positive impact as a city council person. So, went back to my husband and said, you know, let's talk about this further, and we talked about it, and the sacrifice that it would take, because we own a real estate company, I'm a very busy Realtor. You know, if, if you were to look, we have eighteen-thousand Realtors, and last year I was ranked number twenty-five out of the eighteen-thousand. So, you know, I'm out there selling, I'm, I'm busy, I'm making things happen, but because the community is near and dear to my heart, I decided, you know what? I'm going to take a step back, I'm still going to be involved, and I'm going to take a step back, and I'm going to put my hat in the ring, and I'm going to go for it, because I really want to make a positive impact in our city, so that's really it in a nutshell.
Great.
No, or to alter your motives, it's really not about, you know, power, or, you know, any of that, because quite frankly, you know, I'm involved in a lot of different things where I, I'm in an elevated position, so it's really what I can do for the community and, and just be there to be a sounding board, you hit it on the head, Brian, listening. I think the biggest issue that I see, what I hear from people, right now, as I'm out there, door knocking, I'm talking to people, is they feel that they're not being heard, and no one in particular in the city, there's not, you know, it's just in general, they just feel like that they don't have a voice, and so I explained to them, you have a voice by, number one, your vote. But, I, I just want to be able to have people know that they can come to me with whatever their issues are, and then I can be their voice for the city. So, there you have it.
Right, so, first question I'm going to ask you, give my listeners, because we do, we do our interviews, we do put them out, it's our group to hear what's going on. What, give us, what are the role and responsibility of the city council overall? Can you just kind of give a quick?
Real quick, very quick, so what happens is, there's certain things that come before city council that need to be voted on, whether it's a new development, whether it is a new business coming in to the area that, that needs approval, that went to Planning Commission and was not approved at, by the Planning Commission, and, for example, there was a smoke shop that the Planning Commission said, no, we can't, we can't have you here because you're too close to a school, and so, then it came before the city council, and they make a vote on that. Financial, whether it's expenditures for the city. We don't get involved in school decisions, a lot of people think we do, you know, they'll say to me, well, we've got to do something about our education, no, we, we don't handle that. But it's really very local things, a lot of approvals for, right now, the big thing is development. And so there's, you know, if there's going to be another apartment that's going to be built, you know, a lot of people are unhappy, they go down St. Rose, they see all these new apartments. So, those are the things that goes before city council.
Great, and I'm glad you were very honest on the fact, because many of the people run, oh, I'm for school choice, I'm for school this. Truth of the matter is, the city council, that is not their focus, and I want people to talk what your focus is and what will be within your sphere of control.
Right.
But I do want to know your beliefs on, not necessarily on some issues as it comes to even education and some other issues. Okay, so, thanks for being honest there, now, again, city council, a lot of it, like you said, is development. Right now, in America as a whole, and specifically in Henderson, we have a major problem with affordable housing.
Amen.
We are fortunate enough, in Henderson, I think the average mean income is seventy-four thousand. But when you look at it, in the last two years, the, the price points for housing have risen twenty-seven percent and climbing.
The average home is four-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand dollars.
Exactly, so, give me your thoughts, you know, even from a planning perspective, and from the city council's perspective, what are we going to do, or how should we go forward to actually have a city that is not a city for the rich, but has affordable housing, and, and let me make this clear, because many times when I say affordable housing, people mainly think about the poor.
Right, low income, yes.
But the truth of the matter is, our middle class, our young men and young women, our young families who live in Henderson cannot afford a home in Henderson, other than renting it, and so, I want to make this clear, I'm not just talking, I'm not talking about low income per se, which is part of the dialogue, but I'm talking about affordable homeownership in Henderson. Give me, from your perspective of city council, and I'm going to say, from your perspective of a Realtor and a person, what are our major issues, what are our solutions, and how do we actually make Henderson a city for all and not just the rich?
Well, you know, obviously, we're, we're building apartments, there's a need for apartments, there, there is, you know, people come here, they, they initially may not want to buy. When I moved here initially, I lived in an apartment for a short period of time, because I didn't know where I wanted to move, if I was going to stay here twenty-two years ago. But now, it's a whole different thing, now, people are opting for apartments because of the affordability. I, I think that from an affordability standpoint, one of the things, and for density, one of the things that we could look at is more condos or townhomes, because those are more affordable than single-family homes. And really just bringing in development that is going to offer not just the big homes, but homes that can be entry-level affordable homes in the community, and there's certain builders that offer that. So I have not been involved in any, I don't know what their process is in the, you know, in the, the planning process other than, you know, they will determine what the density is going to be, how many units are going to be there, what the average price point is going to be, but we have to look at ways that we can skim cost off, and unfortunately, that really has to do with the builder. And the challenge we have is, now we have lumber and all these different things, that the prices have, have gone up. I'm hearing that they're starting to stabilize, so I think that's going to help, but I think for like the younger folks, I really believe that if we could get some, some type of housing, like more condos and townhomes, I think that would be an answer, the challenges, the reason why builders don't want to build condos is because they are more susceptible to a class action lawsuit. What happens is, I don't know if you've heard about the construction defect litigation, and so what happens is, you have, it's, it's, it's a goldmine for attorneys, and they see that there is a condo complex with a hundred units, and bingo, they find one thing wrong, and then they do a class action lawsuit, and it's just money for the attorneys, and then it costs the builder money, so that, that is the challenge. So, it's not an easy answer, there's, it, it's just not an easy answer, but we have to allocate, we need to allocate land and areas where we can have housing, because I feel like, you know, yes, we're bringing in manufacturing, and it's good, we need that, we need jobs, but we also, we have to, we have to find a solution for housing, so, but it's going to be, it's a process.
Okay.
It's not, it's not an easy answer.
Okay, and, and I'm going to say this, because we're vetting you, but also interviewing you, and you talked about listening, because I hear the politicians sidestep one of the major issues that is affecting affordable housing, and it affects the pockets of Realtors, it affects the pockets of, of corporations, and there needs to be some legislation and commitment from both the local politicians and the state politicians, and potentially the federal. Here's a fact, I'm a, I'm a sixties baby, and the way for generational wealth was you would buy and own your home. It would go up in price, it would go up slow and steady, but it would go up in price. If you paid it off, that was an asset that you could give to your children. We started off, that people started flipping homes, and I'm talking about people started to flip homes, they started to buy the second homes. Well, now, corporations have gotten into the, the single-family homes, and I'm going to say this, and I say this in Pat, and, and I say this with a lot of, I say this, so let me kind of say what I wanted to say. The housing industry should have never, the single-family home housing industry should never become a corporate commodity. It should not have been designed, it was never designed for corporations to come in and buy up subdivisions so that they can hold them to the price they want to, or they can hold them and rent them out, and then which drives up the cost of renting homes. So, I, I, I say this, and this is a tough one, there is a solution, twenty percent of all of the houses in the last couple of quarters have been purchased by investment companies.
Yes.
Supply and demand says this, if they are buying up the supply, they are driving up the demand, they are driving up the cost, they are making it so the average person cannot have or purchase housing, our housing is overpriced because it's being treated like a commodity by investment corporations. And we are not America that the dream of America was affordable housing, I mean, affordable rent. The dream of Americans was homeownership, and we're losing that, because our politicians are ignoring what is really going on, because it affects their pocketbooks, it, it affects the people who throw money at them to understand. No, everything that people want to go, they tiptoe around the root cause, see, I'm an engineer by trade. The problem we have right now is greed, is the corporations have gotten into the single-home market, they're buying the products up, they're driving the prices up, they're overpaying for them, they are paying cash, so they're not worried about having a a market reset, because now they own the properties versus, in the past, what would happen is they'd be driven up, and then what would happen is, you'd have the market crash. So, before you answer, Professor Cosgrove, am I owing the money on that, and give me your thoughts before Trish asks for your response there?
So I already just posted in the chat, so the Nevada Current just read an article about that, and ProPublica has been running articles on it as well, about the hedge funds going into markets and buying up properties and then sitting on them to drive the prices up.
Yes, it's, it's, it's a hu, it's a huge challenge, and, and where we, how it affects, you're right, it affects our pocketbooks, because we have agents in my office that are putting multiple offers on homes for buyers, for families that just want a home, and they're being outbid by the investors, by the corporate investors, and it's just, it's a tragedy, it's a travesty.
It's a simple fix, though, all you have to do is make it so they can make no money. Legislation that says we're going to tax the hell out of you, legislation that says we're, we're going to give you higher taxes for even when you purchase them, you, and I'm saying, not you purposely, but, uh, city government and federal government and state government can force them out. But the question is, with big business and big money, basically determining a lot of times the outcomes of the elections and basically being able to control the electors, we don't even want to discuss it, let alone action, put action on it. So I say this, because, again, you're in the real estate business, I own a home, fortunately, but as I look at what's going on, even if I sold it, I still got to pay higher prices for housing, so, nobody's winning but the corporations, nobody in the political arena wants to talk about this, because every time I talk to them, I have to bring it up, they don't acknowledge it, and I'm saying, are we willing to fight for the people to actually, if it requires legislation, or doing something differently to drive corporate investment out of the single-family homes? That's the only solution.
Have you?
Everything.
Have you talked to anybody at, on the state level, because that really is, in my opinion, where it needs to start, is right here in Nevada, with, on our state level.
I'm talking to the state level, you just happen to be, you're getting to hear, everybody that I talk to is going to be hit on this issue, because it is not just the state level, it can be done, it can be addressed at the city level, at the state level, legislation can be put in, and basically, the message has to come from the cities, it has to come from the state and from the federal, that we are tired of you basically killing the American dream, and that's just my opinion, and that's why I'm going to be very adamant, not just to you, but everybody from every level, that we got to start talking about the truth, and not talking about, oh, we're putting a hundred-and-fifty-million dollars into into low-income housing, which means you're building some apartments, which means, again, you bought into the belief, I'm not saying you that the American dream is now to have affordable rentals, I do not believe that's the American dream. I believe we need to focus on how we can drive up homeownership, and it starts off with driving corporations out of the single-family home market.
Well, I do know that this has been discussion that the Board of Realtors has been having, I don't know if you've spoken to anybody there, you have?
No, I haven't, and, and, so like I said, I'm, I'm kind of dealing with the political people, so you, you get to find out that, yes, I will be talking to them and anybody that will listen.
Because they have a lobbyist, and these are things that need to be brought up, because there's a lot of power with their their lobbying group, and I think that there, this is definitely something that, that needs to be addressed, because it is absolutely, you're absolutely right, it's out of control, and we're seeing it every day, the, probably the biggest blessing that we saw happen was when Zillow pulled out of purchasing homes, because they were the biggest buyer of homes for several years, and, but it, it, it just, their, their business model wasn't set up right, and they ended up losing money, they would buy a house for, let's say, three-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand, but it was only maybe worth three-eighty, and there was no margin in there for them, so they were actually losing money, so their stocks, stocks have gone down. So I was told I should go buy stock in Zillow, but I'm not going to do it.
Yeah, again, I thank you, we'll talk some more on that, first, I wanted to invite you, you, I know you may have a previous engagement, this Saturday, from seven to nine, we're going to have an event at Shanitas.
I do, and actually, you told me about it, I have, unfortunately, an event for a nonprofit I'm involved with, but I did invite several people, I think I told you, even Shandell Newsom is going to, is going to be there, but I did invite several people, so you should hopefully have some people from, from my invites.
Great, so, so now, let's go to the next one. Every city speaks on diversity and inclusion, correct? Everybody says they support diversity, diversity and inclusion. Henderson is a city with a lot of growth, as you said, you're bringing more industry in, etc. You're, you have government works, you have a lot of issues that are going on that drive economics. The independent black voters believe, we have a saying, black power is a three-legged stool requiring social justice, economic might, in our political agenda, not the Republicans nor the Democrats, because we believe also that this issue is not just about our communities, about all communities, we have to have the issues to drive them. Economics is the key, though, economics is what drives actually social justice, economics is what drives an agenda. So, economically, when you look at what's going on, the black populace in Henderson is right between six to eight percent. Unfortunately, it's shrinking, not growing. A lot of that does go back to economics, because you look at the, 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 the work that's being done, from the city work to the private work, to other work out there, from the construction area and other areas. to the private work, to other work out there from the construction area and other areas. Uh, there's very little participation from black businesses. Uh, we have people that can do construction, we have businesses that can do construction. Uh, we need to have a targeted objective from the city. That is, if they say they are about diversity and they love to tout diversity, then walk the talk. So one of the things I'm looking for from any candidate is a commitment to be serious about diversity and not just talk diversity when it sounds good as a soundbite. Because right now, uh, the city of Henderson, I don't have to pull a lot of information, is not doing a very good job. And my question to you and my commitment to anyone that will be endorsed. Are you gonna be serious about diversity and and I'm talking about economically? Because it's great to do things, uh, to help uh, people, it's great to have five O, uh, the independent, uh, what is it nonprofits? But this country was not built on nonprofits, it's built on businesses. And if you wanna have a diverse, a very diverse community, then economically you have to be very diverse on the allocation of opportunities. And that's something we're about. So that was long-winded, now I'm gonna shut up. Uh, I'm gonna ask Sandra, did you have an opinion on that before I asked Trish to to give me your overall opinion?
Uh, I agree with what you said, and then I wanna add a little bit. So um, I work with the disability community in Nevada. And I mean, one of those very small silver linings to the pandemic is Zoom. That now it's much easier to have like face-to-face conversations with folks and not be on the conference call trying to figure out how to do star nine and then you hang yourself up and yeah, this is easier. And so um, I've had, I'm actually chairing one of their subcommittees for the statewide Independent Living Council. And we're looking at in uh, integrated workforce development. There are a lot of people and some of them are black who have disabilities that before, in order for them to be able to get a job, it was with like Opportunity Village and there was transportation. And then all of a sudden, we could work at home. And they're like, wait, I have a computer, I'm at home, I could have a job now. But there's not really anywhere for them to go to say, hey, I have a disability, I need someone to like walk me through. How much money can I make before I start losing my benefits? And is there um, a way to get a business license, maybe at a discounted rate or so that and then I would pay uh, more maybe the next year? And I've been talking a little bit with a lieutenant, new lieutenant governor, and she's interested in helping. But I think like you started out, I think the real engine of licensing and and business development is gonna be with our city councils. And so I would kind of add into what Brian said, I'm already thinking about, you know, ways to expand out who we're talking about when we say business development.
Right, no, that's you're right on on that. Um, well, actually, I met with the um, fire chief yesterday and we actually had this very conversation. Um, I asked him about diversity and about they have three hundred firefighters. And um, you know, how, what are they doing for diversity? Whether it's black Hispanic females, their biggest challenge is finding females just because of the the type of work. But um, I I speak fluent Spanish, oh, can't hear you.
Before, I I heard you make that statement because a lot of people do. But how many black people are 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 black people, men or women, are on the fire uh, station right now?
He gave me the number, it's a low percentage.
So it's not just about women, because a lot of times I hear that and as a black man, I cringe. Because people make statements to say, well, we gotta take care of women. But when you really look at it, no, you need to make sure that black men and black women also are included. Because diversity sometimes means anybody but us. And one of the things I'm gonna tell you is the way they rate who comes in, and we'll talk after you finish, is a very point. But I I really have to tell people, stop going to that, well, we need more women.
Oh, no.
Or I'm saying, when the problem is 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 much broader than that issue.
Right, and white women understand that sometimes that's how white men cheat. Is it like, okay, you're close enough like us because you're white, so we'll just bring you in, and they don't do any more than that to actually bring in people of color.
Right, and that was really what, I I I just wanted to hear what, is there a plan in place? And are they following the plan? And um, and and what are the challenges they're having? And um, because I I am for diversity, I mean, you know, I speak fluent Spanish. So I've been very involved in the Hispanic market and in the Hispanic community. And um, you know, and I I also see that there's not as many, there's more Hispanics than there are blacks, I will tell you that. But um, it's important, it's truly, truly important. So I am, I am all in for ensuring that we have a diverse community because you can say it. But you gotta do it, and that was why I I I did what I did in talking with the the fire chief yesterday. And um, they have a plan, but I I think that they need to 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 increase those numbers.
Well, I wanna take a second, uh, Trish, and thank you. As I told you, this is not your average vet. I ask tough questions for
That's okay.
And I push people because if we endorse you, we endorse you to win. But we wanna make sure you clearly understand some of the issues that are prevalent. I would like to see, you're right, I'd like to see the black community increase in Henderson because it is decreasing. Uh, but we're gonna vote, and if we vote hard, we will help determine who wins. Uh, now let me tell you a few things, uh, because you talked to the fire chief, let me tell you some of the hidden secrets that black folks know. The way that they determine who is a firefighter, a lot of times they have a point system. If you are, if you are in sense, i- in fact, if you say are uh, ex-military, a veteran, you get extra points. Let's say if you uh, worked at uh, in a rural fireplace, because now you have experience, you get extra points. Many uh, black people are, do not have the advantage of working in these rural areas, many are not veterans. So a lot of times people say, I'm for diversity, but they ask us to celebrate the fact that the criteria that is put together is set up so that we still do not get hired. Because the veterans get a higher point, point system, sometimes women get a higher point system. You turn around and you uh, that person who can go in the rural areas and get experience, they all get pushed ahead of everybody else. And then sometimes now they put in um, what is it? Uh, I'm trying to think of the the requirements of uh, I'm trying to think, the uh, what is it with medical, uh, they come in uh,
The EMT?
EMTs, they put those on, so all of these are barriers of entry. And they really give the ability to continue to systematically, systematic racism is basically putting up barriers of entry. And so when people talk about diversity, a lot of times, they really don't talk about breaking down the barriers. They actually are putting up more barriers of entry to make it harder for people of color, specifically black people. Because again, we are partnered with the Hispanic, independent Hispanic voters because many of the issues that we see are the same. So I would love to talk to you with the fire chief because just as we just talked about in the uh, the affordable housing. It seems like we know the answers. Uh, and we know a lot of what's going on, but when people talk about themselves, they really don't address what's going on. Systemic racism is alive and it's just been re uh, it's been re-scripted so that it's acceptable, but the barriers are still there. And without destroying the barriers, we will continue to have an unequal economy, which will be uh, not just bad for the black community, but it is bad for every community. So again, I thank you for taking the tough call questions, so.
If I'm in city council, I'm gonna have arrows thrown at me, so I gotta have tough skin. But I'm happy to set up something with the the fire chief, I think that would be a very interesting conversation.
Well, you let me know, I I I, if you set it up, I'll be there. But now let's talk about it, public works. There's actually legislation and it's been on the books for a long time to actually look at the breakdown of people working and businesses working on public works. Uh, if I look at the city of Henderson, it probably looks like the rest of them. Where we have the numbers, the numbers are dismal. And because there is no direct attempt to have better numbers, we talk about diversity, but we see business as usual. Will we get the city council that gets serious again about looking at, are we really, really being fair to our communities as a whole? Are we really trying to bring in a diverse business? And not just jobs, but actually people that are doing work for the community that are black businesses, Hispanic businesses, and not basically the old boy system that we see today.
Yeah, well, um, I guess my question is for you is have you, I I don't know what their, wh- where city council has been up until now. I I don't know if they've been having diversity conversations. But I'm assuming based on the conversation we're having, that that hasn't been happening. And why? I don't know, because it's so critical. And um, you know, as I said, my involvement in in diversity has been from the Hispanic standpoint just because of my involvement in the, in the, in the Latino community. Um, so I I definitely believe that this is, it's just one of those things that has to be addressed. Because um, i- it's, it's just something, I I mean, I'm just shocked that we are not further ahead as a city. I I didn't realize the numbers were going down for black residents in Henderson. I I had no idea of that, so um, so yes, you have my commitment that that is gonna be a topic that um, has to, it can't throw it under the carpet. And I think that you mentioned the good old boys club, well, you didn't say club, but I'm saying it. And um, I think that, that's why I feel that I I will be a a, um, an asset to city council, because I'm willing to talk about issues that are difficult. And um, we just have to address them. And I know right now, you know, there's, there's issues happening in the, on the police side about, you know, questions of of racism and, you know, things happening there. But we have to look at the whole city as a, as a whole, not just one, one area.
Yeah, and I I I wanna, first of all, again, I wanted, Rose Gaston, she is representing the Churches of Southern Nevada. Their group that I work with from time to time, okay? Uh, a- a- again, she's listening in to see how we're doing these things because we're doing it across. Uh, Chris, we're looking for people who are willing to talk about the issues that I'm talking about right now. Uh, this didn't happen overnight, it won't be fixed overnight.
Right.
But we need people to realize that there has to be a commitment. Because the issues I'm talking about, economics, it is not just in the black community. It is not just uh, uh, it's it's the the housing issue is not a uh, just a black issue, it's everybody's issue.
Yes, it doesn't matter about color, it's just, it's people are people. And I I agree a hundred percent.
Okay, so let me ask you a question. Homelessness, obviously, we in Henderson, there is a problem, it's kind of a hidden problem. But we're see, as we see the rise of uh, of housing, so that there is not affordable housing, we're seeing a rise in the homeless. Uh, many times it, uh, there's an attempt to identify homelessness of strictly being a mental illness or drug problem. But the truth of the matter is, many people that are on the streets now are on the streets because they simply cannot afford to have a roof over their heads and they choose between whether to be homeless on a tent or to starve. Um, what is Henderson's uh, what's what's your thought from the city council aspect? Because we can't just move them around and we can't just ticket them and we can't just try to figure ways to keep them out of sight. What do you think about where we are and what do you think we need to do? Because here's another hint, forty percent of the people that are homeless are African-American. Uh, and so obviously, I'd like to know what's your strategy as the cost of housing goes up? The cost period, be it rentals or whatever, to say, how do we address this problem that is growing? And will continue to grow in the coming years.
Yes, and we're, I I'm seeing the increase just driving down Lake Mead. It it's, it's, it's definitely uh, um, becoming a bigger problem in Henderson. It wasn't, like you said, it wasn't as big of an issue for Henderson, but it's, it's becoming worse. So you know, I've had many conversations about homelessness with people within the city. Um, I talked to the, I have met with the the police chief and um, Andre Frederick. And we talked about homelessness and you know, what he explained from a police standpoint is, you know, unfortunately, they can't really move people and do anything. But from a standpoint of resources, um, we need to have resources for the homeless. Um, I had somebody reach out to me, she's a veteran and she's been homeless. Um, she reached out to me, she know I'm, knows I'm running, she wanted to know what my stance was. This was on my my Facebook page and fortunately, I was able to help her. Uh, this just happened like two days ago. Um, so I reached out to a veterans organization, they reached out to her, and so they're, they're trying to help her. It's, it's just, it's tough and and I don't truly know what the answer is, I know that I'm asking a lot of questions right now. That's why I met with the the police chief to find out, you know, from a police standpoint, what what's going on. I've been meeting with um, a couple of the uh, people within the city to find out what can we do as far as resources for the homeless. We need to um, you you know, whether it's food, whether it's healthcare, whether it's, you know, whatever it might be. We have to do something. Um, but I will be honest, I don't have, I don't have an answer for it. I I wish I had some wonderful solution for you. Um, I don't, but I do know that it has to be addressed. And it's just like the diversity um, topic. We can't just push it under the carpet and say we can't do anything about it. Uh, you know, if they're on city property, they can stay there, whatever the case may be, we we have to do something about it. Uh, you know, I know that there's shelters in Las Vegas, we don't have a shelter here in in Henderson. Um, but it's one of those things of, well, not in my backyard, people don't wanna have anything here. So, but you you're right, as as home prices go up and as the economy, it's becoming less and less affordable with inflation. It's uh, it it's a, it's a, it's an issue that we just have to, we can't put our head in the, in the sand anymore. So um, don't have any
Did you say that your husband does commercial real estate?
He does, yes.
Yeah, I was reading about what's happening in like the San Francisco Bay area. And something that kind of jumped out because there's a empty Kmart store right in my neighborhood that's been sitting empty for like four years. That there are some um, property owners that have commercial properties that they don't think it's gonna be viable as a commercial property anymore for a number of reasons, you know, people are working from home, so their company's downsizing or whatever. And they're trying to then rezone some of the commercial property into residential property to see if it can be repurposed. But I'm not, I'm not familiar enough with the Henderson um, commercial market to know if you guys have that too.
Actually, that that's a great idea because there are, there's a couple areas in Henderson that are more industrial. And they're not around a residential area and that would be because people, you you know, they don't want it in their backyard. But this is something that that could potentially be an answer and it's literally right here in downtown Henderson. So, thank you, that's a, that's a good idea.
And Trish, I wanna make, again, I appreciate it, I understand, if you had all my answers, then that means you're not really thinking through, because many of these questions I ask you are so complexed that, but we need to start talking about them in real time. Because just as I said, I am concerned about the folks that are on the bottom end of the spectrum. But we're becoming a third world country where our middle class is disappearing at this, uh, they're becoming homeless, they're becoming poor. They're becoming, uh, we're becoming the haves and have-not community. So you know, there's no quick answer, part of it is greed, part of it is, uh, you know, capitalism is turned into greed. Uh, but there's no big answers, but it's time to start forcing the dialogues away from the safe answers where everybody has an answer to the real root cause and say, how do we fix these problems? So I appreciate you listening and more importantly, we, we're gonna need people in the council that are ready to listen. Because I'm gonna say this, one of the concerns, obviously, as a real estate agent, you make your money in uh, with the folks that are basically doing what they're doing now. You make your money in uh, with the folks that are basically doing what they're doing now. I told you, corporations are a major problem. Of lack of affordable housing. So let me ask you this question, because you told me, obviously, you didn't come in. To run for city council for the money. But would you be willing to fight the fights that may eventually? They won't relu- uh, re- reduce the amount of opportunity on your plate that may actually have to be a decision. That you know it's good for the people, but it's not good for my business. So tell me a little bit there.
Well, uh, yeah, I mean, obviously, if I'm in this position, I have to put the people first. And put myself and my pocketbook last, which quite frankly, I'm doing by taking the city council position because. You know, I'm going to be taking time away from, from my business. Um, but, you know, absolutely, I mean, there's going to be a lot of difficult decisions I'm going to have. And um. And, y- you know, it's. All I can say is if I were to make a decision that was in my best interest. Um, the, the constituents, they're not going to go for that. And so I have to be able to put my head on the pillow at night knowing that I did what's best for the community and not for Trish Nash. And so, you know, you, you have my commitment to that. Um, I don't know, you know, what those situations would be, but I'm sure they're going to come up. And another thing, you know, is my husband's in commercial real estate and there are going to be times where. I may, not always, because he's, he, he, he deals with charter schools. Um, that's his specialty. And uh, so there might be a couple of times where I might have to abstain from a vote because it has to do with a charter school. That uh, he might be working with. Um, but. I would, I, it would be very selfish of me if I were to try to steer things in a direction that's going to be best for Trish Nash. So that's, that, that can happen.
I'm gonna say, we're, we're getting to it, I want to keep this to an hour and I I I, again, I keep thanking you because again, not everybody uh, is comfortable on the hot seat. And you've been pretty well on the hot seat. Uh, I'm gonna um, to to Rose, give you a second to see if you had a question or two that you wanted to ask. And also, uh, I'm gonna ask you, Dr. Cosgrove, did you have? Because obviously, I've been asking most of the questions.
I'll just um, let Rose talk, because I've already asked a couple of questions.
Uh. Okay, hello, hi everyone. Hi, I actually do not have a question. Uh, I'm excited about this. Uh, new role that I'm seated in as well as hearing the comments that you do have. But I do have a comment, if that's okay, Brian. Is that okay? All right, uh, given my background, I do work, I've worked extensively with homeless. As well as helping to try to secure them housing. And other uh, areas in mental health, mental wellness, as well as working with those who have autism. So I've worked with uh, from infant and toddlers to seniors. Uh, what I do want to say in the area of homelessness and the issues that Henderson is now facing, as well as we in Las Vegas have been facing. Is that it's easy, it may be easy at some point to find a building and put people in. But there are underlying issues besides needing a building and those issues are those addictions. And those other issues that are out there. And so um, definitely, uh, if there is a committee or something that we may. Formulate or find out later on, uh, Ms. Nash, that you may be working on, I would certainly uh, be willing to be a part of that. And to assist with that because again, I've worked extensively with homeless. And I know that just putting them in a building, that's one thing, but if you don't deal with the other issues that are going on, such as, as I was thinking. Uh, the addictions that they have, the mental illness that they are suffering with. Uh, being unable to secure uh, proper ID so that they can get other services that they need. Those are some of the other issues. We may find a building and we may put them in there, but that may not end the problem. All right, so I just wanted to kind of share that when you do speak to others and and we address those issues with um, our homeless population. And some of the other issues that we're dealing with. So again, I'm very uh, honored to be uh, sitting in this seat and being able to hear. Uh, the ideas and things that we want to try to accomplish together. Uh, in collaboration with everyone that is a part of this great uh, state that we live in. Thank you again, Brian.
Thank you. So I did want to make a comment and that is, um, you know, I talked earlier about um. Living Grace Homes, these are homeless young ladies. And you're absolutely right, Rose, we have to get to the root of what the issues are. And that's what we do with these young ladies, is many of them come in. They're pregnant, but they also have other addiction issues. And so we, we work with them very closely. I'm also involved in a, a organization called Veterans Treatment Court in Henderson. It was Judge Mark Stevens. And so yes, it is veterans, but um, same thing. You know, they have issues and they have to go through this program of at least a year. In order for them to graduate. And by the time they graduate, they, they're not taking substances anymore. And most of the, the success rate for Veterans Treatment Court is in the ninety percent rate. So that's a great thing. So. Rose, you're absolutely right, we have to get to the root of the issues and and I feel that, you know, it's. But but it is, it's, it's, it's becoming a bigger issue in Henderson and we've, we've got to figure it out.
Number one thing you're always telling me talking about is workforce development and behavioral mental health. Even if, you know, I tell people, even if Brian was to say, hey, Sandra, here's a bazillion dollars, hire as many school psychologists as you want. They're not there, you know, we, we don't have a pipeline set up. And so we just don't even have enough professionals. To meet that demand that Rose was just talking about. It's gotten to where it's really severe. And then with the pandemic on top of that. I mean, everybody that I talk to is needing a little counseling right now.
And 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 too, let me say something and I, I think this is the kind of dialogue I like to have when I have these calls. Um, it's still about the e- economy. And and uh, here's the funny thing that people don't realize. The, if you have hopelessness, you turn to drugs. If you have hopelessness, it can affect you mentally. Many of these things still go back to the underlying factor of an unequal economy. That is driving people to hopelessness. Uh, as I stated, many people do and I, and and we have to deal with the underlying facts. I'm a root cause guy. But the, that's why I said, a percentage of people are living there simply because economically they cannot afford housing. And sometimes we want to skip that issue because that comes back to a root cause that is also important. But it all drives back to economics and we have to have cities that understand. That if everyone is economically strong, if the opportunities are there. Then we won't have mass uh, uh incarcerations that uh disproportionately hit black men. And black, uh, young black men, because, you know, it's great that people talk about how to help veterans. Uh, I'm concerned about how do we stop seeing my young black boys and now girls. Going, being incarcerated and when you realistically look back, it is an economics issue. Um, folks, I need to get my charger, but we're almost finished, so we're, we're at the end. Uh, this is the first of a couple of conversations I'm gonna have. I'm, I'm talking to all the people that are running for city council. Not just here, but in North Las Vegas, in uh, in Las Vegas, et cetera. Our. Uh, the, the independent black voters, we're trying to create alliances. We have a independent Hispanic voters. We are working with the churches of Southern Nevada, we're working with any group that is willing to partner with us as we try to. Educate a forum and communicate uh, in a different level that is not based on parties. To both folks, because we want to have and need to have people who are willing to get out the box and not just follow, uh, stick with the script. That is given to them by their political party. So, uh, so before I lose my, my stuff here, hopefully, I'm gonna go running. I'm aggressive, then I'm gonna let you end it, Trish, by telling everybody here. Uh, again, why they need to vote for you, telling them why you are the best candidate. So, take that off, I'm gonna. I'm gonna keep on here, I'm hoping like heck, I didn't plug, put my plug in, but I'm hoping like heck, it's going to uh. Give me the last couple of minutes.
All right, well, thank you, Brian. Um, well, you, you know, you said you asked a lot of difficult questions and and this is something I'm accustomed to. And in the business that I'm in, I have to deal with, you know, difficult situations with clients, you can't make everyone happy. And I've learned that throughout the years. And I know that I'm going to be in the hot seat quite a bit as a city council person. And, you know, I feel that, A, having been, being a business owner. Um, but but being in leadership positions within our community. And having been deeply rooted in our community for so many years. Genuinely caring and and that is, I think, so important. And then we talked about the ability to and the importance of listening. That is important. I've had to do that throughout all my years of my businesses. You know, it's not about selling, it's about listening. And um, that is a skill set that I've, I've learned throughout the years. Also, in sales, I negotiate and I have to be able to negotiate. With whether it's the other city council people to help them see things in a way that maybe I want, would like them to see. Um, but to be willing to talk about difficult topics, like you just talked about. Because these are things that I think have been, yeah, you know, they're brought, brought up, but I don't know that anything really definitive has been done. And I think that um, as a, as a, as a city council person, I'm willing to bring up those topics and say. We have to deal with diversity, we've got to figure out homelessness, we, these are things we have to do. Because if we want our community to be great and we keep talking about how great Henderson is. We have to be a diverse community. And um, and so I'm, I'm willing to, to have those difficult conversations. Um, so I, I think we lost, lost Brian, but there he is. Um, and you know, I care, that's, I I think also.